Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 22, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Amber Baylor. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 1303. Resolution amending Resolution Number 878 of 2018 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2019 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the Pittsburgh City Code so as to replace the attached fee schedule and update the effective date." Bill Number 1304. Resolution amending Resolution 843 of 2018 by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019, providing for the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $8,000 in favor of Kathleen Kusunik and her attorneys Elliot and Davis, fully releasing the city from all claims and liability for alleged property damages as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Plea. Bill Number 1305. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tabitha Workmeister on her own behalf and as guardian of her minor children and Greenwich Dion Wilson in an amount not to exceed $80,000 in settlement of litigation and as ordered by the court as described in full and final general release and settlement agreement between parties. Bill Number 1306. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Carol Katz in an amount not to exceed $3,200 for mediation services rendered to the parties in a federal litigation case. Bill Number 1307. Resolution amending Resolution Number 29 of 2019, providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kramer Maines and Associates and Roy Cox in an amount not to exceed $19,000 in full and final settlement of an action filed with the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and cross-filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019. Bill Number 1308. Resolution amending Resolution 231 of 2018 entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh and providing for police services at Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh Properties over a three-year term in order to update the account numbers." Bill Number 1316. Resolution providing for professional services agreement or existing agreements for consulting services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $135,000. Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 1310. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dolan Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $9,950 for verbal de-escalation training for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Councilman Coria O'Connor presents Bill Number 1311. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the Pittsburgh Produce Terminal redevelopment project. The existing building will be converted from Produce Warehouse office space into a combination retail, restaurant, entertainment, and office center. The parking lot to the rear will be updated to current standards. This site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between 16th and 21st Streets in the Second Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1312. Resolution authorizing the transfer by the City of Pittsburgh to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation certain public right-of-way and temporary construction easement rights on certain property of the 32nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh in cooperation with the Penn Dock construction project. Council President Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1313. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article 11 Human Resources, Chapter 192 Pension at General Provisions Section 192.01 Definitions and also at Municipal Benefit Plan Number 2 Section 192.23 Municipal Benefits in order to allow interest payments on withdrawals from the municipal pension plan and to authorize the calculation of interest. This bill is sponsored by Council President Bruce Kraus. Bill Number 1314. Resolution appointing Sean DeYoung to the Pittsburgh HIV and AIDS Commission per Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. Bill Number 1315. Resolution appointing Valerie Stallworth to the Pittsburgh HIV and AIDS Commission per Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. And Bill Number 1317. Communication from Anu Jaiing, Executive Director of the Gender Equity Commission submitting the 2018 Report of the Gender Equity Commission. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction today. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strausberger, Mr. Kraus, President, five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We ask that you would remain standing then for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you. You may be seated. We have no proclamations to either be presented or read into the record this morning, and so that will take us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, will have three minutes in which to do so. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. I would like to remind everyone here to speak that the rules of council are very clear, that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, deliberation, which may or at this time, or may at another time, come before this council. We do not permit profanity and we will maintain order at all times. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. I came today because I wanted to talk just as a person to you, especially the citizens that are out there, because most of the time, they don't want to hear what I got to say. But it's about Christmas. When I found out that Toys R Us took the Toys R Us where you could get the toys out to Robinson Township, Robinson Township, Robinson Township, look where we live. I saw where the governor said he's going to start working with the grandmothers to have to take care of these children of so many parents that have died or are on drugs. That's what the governor said. So think about Toys R Us. How many grandchildren, grandmothers couldn't get out to Robinson Township? I'm serious. I couldn't go. I don't have transportation. Not that that makes any difference to you, but for my grandchildren. I'm not into Christmas. They don't even know, these little ones, them last little ones, don't even know about this place being Santa Claus bringing toys. Because I didn't really teach them that. Because to me, Christmas is about praising Jesus. It's his birthday. We used to go to church on Christmas, Christmas Eve at 12:00. We would sing Happy Birthday Dear Jesus. The reason why I'm saying this, that I'm looking at how many children didn't get anything. Now, you got Oak Hill. Oak Hill was giving out toys. The one lady took her grand, took her nephew, and they gave out toys to everybody. They had a room full of toys. The little boy, they went, give him a toy. The little boy, five years old, sat there and cried. When you're making decisions for the poor people, think about the poor people. When you say that there's free food or feed dinners down at the so-and-so, but you must register by computer? Do you understand? They don't have phones. And when I went to Wheatley, and I said something, go to the library, Ms. Brown. I said, the library. Oh, Ms. Brown, I said, I don't have a computer. The library. That's all you say. And that's in the paper, go to the library. Where do these people have the opportunity to do it? You need to think about when you're making rules for the poor people. That's why you need the poor people coming down and tell you what you're not doing. Do you understand? When we got burnt out, we went to the hotel, they give you tickets to get food. One lady went, she couldn't even buy no food with the tickets. Why wouldn't you give them tickets to go to McDonald's? These type of things, but you're helping the hotel. You're helping the hotel and not the poor people. I'm telling you, I come down because you need to know, you need to know how the children, not me, don't worry about me. I'm worried about these children that are being treated like they're nothing. I heard all Katie Kay, well, he said that the big women with food stamps, oh, so what would she do? Make the children work. Did you hear it? Make the children work. My daughter was on food stamps then, and she was working. I started to call and say, she's on food stamps. So when do my five-year-old, do she have to start following your children at Disneyland, picking up papers because she's on food stamps? But the law said that the babies should be able to eat. So please remember that. When they talk about food stamps, the law say we're supposed to help the children.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Beltsburg, Oakland, American Physical Society, Division of Quantum Information, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President of the United States 2020, son of VA Rika, Italian-American, and CJ Miller Sr., German-American. A concern of City Council is Pittsburgh and U.S.-American culture. Who is Hans Georg Gudgast? Hans Georg Gudgast, a national track and field champion, emigrated from Bradenbeck, Deutschland, to the United States in 1958, emerged in 1960s, playing Nazi commanders, engaged athletically on the Jewish Maccabi Soccer Club in Los Angeles, and then was employed in 1980 in a CBS daytime role named Eric Braden from Bradenbeck as Victor Newman. European orphan, immigrant, intent on a new identity in a new world land, very core USA idea, a new man, victorious business entrepreneur relentless, like the actor himself, 1980 to 2019, 38 years, daytime Emmy nominee, eight, and winner two times for Best Actor. One of the most successful U.S. television actors ever on one of the most influential television programs in U.S.-American history, The Young and the Restless, whose new programming is appreciated by millions of U.S.-Americans across lines of sex, gender, race, ethnicity, in all U.S. states, national cultural integrator in my view, whose old musical theme, Nadia's Song, unreplaced after 40 years, written by Enrico Henri Mancini, one of our greatest composers, is instantly recognized throughout the United States. When you see Victor Newman Braden Gudgast, recipient of humanitarian awards by the governments of Deutschland and Israel, you are encountering an anti-white supremacist, U.S.-American migrant, ensign, rivaling all others. But he did something else. In a brief film career, he played ruthless, brilliant scientists like Dr. Charles Foreman, creator of the AI supercomputer controlling the defense of the United States, whose prodigious information and intelligence abilities enabled it to take over the world in the 1970 film Colossus, The Foreman Project. When you see Dr. Charles Foreman, Mr. Gudgast Braden, you are encountering an anti-Frankensteinian U.S.-American scientist emblem paralleled by a few others. I would read his autobiography, I'll Be Damned.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, seeing no further speakers in the chamber, that will conclude the public comment portion of the council meeting. It will take us into presentation of papers. Our first committee is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our chair is Councilman Burgess. May I have Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess? Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1303. Resolution amending Resolution Number 878, authorizing the fee schedule for 2019 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code so as to replace the attached fee schedule and update the effective date. Bill Number 1304. Resolution amending Resolution Number 843 by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019 in favor of Kathleen Kusunik and her attorney Elliot and Davis, fully releasing the city from all claims and liability for alleged property damages as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Plea. Bill Number 1305. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Tabitha Workmeister on her own behalf and as guardian on behalf of her minor children and a Greenwich Dion Wilson in an amount not to exceed $80,000 in settlement of litigation and as ordered by the court as described in the full and final general release and settlement agreement between the parties. Bill Number 1306. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Carol Katz in an amount not to exceed $3,200 for mediation services rendered to the parties in a federal litigation case. Bill Number 1307. Resolution amending Resolution 29 of 2019, providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Kramer Maines and Associates and Roy Cox in an amount not to exceed $19,000 in full and final settlement of an action filed in the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and cross-filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019. Bill Number 1308. Resolution amending Resolution Number 231 of 2018, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with the Housing Authority of the city for providing for police services at HACP properties over a three-year term in order to update account numbers. Bill Number 1316. Resolution providing for a professional service agreement or existing agreements for consulting services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $135,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Forgive me. Thank you, Councilman. On Bill 1305, under our Finance and Law Committee, we do have a request to waive the rules of council so that this will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. May I have a motion to waive the rules on 1305?
No move.
Second. Is there a discussion from anyone? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? 1305 will then be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you.
Question?
Sure.
There is a number of them for requests for executive session. It doesn't pertain to all of them, just that one?
The tradition is always to, on a request for an executive session, call for it when the Wednesday, when it comes up for preliminary discussion.
That's not the question.
Then I don't understand.
Waive the rules.
We're waiving the rules on 1305.
1305.
Yeah, that is, that there's an executive session requested on. I understand what you're asking then, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, can you advise us as our parliamentarian? We could still have it on the agenda tomorrow.
Right. It's on the agenda tomorrow.
Hold for the scheduling of an executive session and then bring it back the following Wednesday.
Right. Both Bill 1305 and 1306 have in a note to say executive session requested, which you would normally do on tomorrow's meeting.
Well, we also have 1307, so why not do all three? Because they're all executive session.
I don't know that there's a need to waive the rules to expedite those bills.
Right. The $80,000 appear to be something that was ordered. It's a full and final. The other two are still in discussion. Just by reading that Bill 1305 seems to be in order by the judge. It's ordered by the court, so it's not like, you know, an executive session would make any difference.
I just wanted to make sure that if DB and these three are together here, that we would wait on all three and then hold the other two if not needed.
There's no need to expedite the other two bills. There's not a request or an urgency in the passing of them, and I stand by waiving the rules for 1305, and we'll schedule the executive session tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. So then we are Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Economic Development. Can I have Councilwoman Harris for Councilwoman Gross, please?
No new papers.
Okay. Thank you. It's okay. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services. May I have Councilman Burgess for Councilman Lavelle? Thank you, Councilman.
I don't think so.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did I? My phone's blowing up. I got 67 things going on at the same time. Councilman O'Connor, thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1310. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Dolan Consulting Group in an amount of $9,950 for verbal de-escalation training for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Are you Central Catholic?
That's right.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1311. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Pittsburgh Produce Terminal redevelopment project. The existing building will be converted from Produce Warehouse office space into a combination retail, restaurant, entertainment, and office center. The parking lot to the rear will be updated to current standards. The site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between 16th and 21st Street in the Second Ward of the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services. May I have Councilwoman Straussberger for Councilwoman Kell Smith? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1312. Resolution authorizing the transfer by the City to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation certain public right-of-way and temporary construction easement rights on certain property of the 32nd Ward of the city in cooperation with a Penn Dock construction project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Straussberger, our Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair does have new papers? Let's see, let's take them all together, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1313. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title I Administrative Article 1 Human Resources in order to allow interest payments on withdrawals from the municipal pension plan and to authorize the calculation of interest. Bill Number 1314. Resolution appointing Sean DeYoung to the Pittsburgh HIV AIDS Commission per Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards and Commissions and Authorities. Bill Number 1315. Resolution appointing Valerie Stallworth to the Pittsburgh HIV AIDS Commission per Title I Administrative Article 9 Boards, Commission, and Authority. Bill Number 1317. Communication from Anu Palmer Jane, Executive Director of the Gender Equity Commission, submitting the 2018 Report of the Gender Equity Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe I need a motion to receive and file 317, or 1317? So may I please have a motion to receive and file Bill 1317?
No move.
Second? Second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you. Councilman O'Connor, yeah, advise me, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so on Bill 1314 and 1315, these are new appointees to the HIV AIDS Commission. I suggest we approve them because at the end of this meeting or right now, the HIV AIDS Commission comes in for a post-agenda to inform council on what they've done over each year. So I was going to call for that, and then these two new members would be present if we had questions for them.
Okay. So the councilman has a motion to approve the appointments of 1314, 1315. May I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Counselwoman?
Okay, would we also put in that motion that we would be discussing them at that time?
Yeah, I have to finish this, and then I was going to call for a public hearing either at the end of the meeting or...
Public hearing or post-agenda?
Or post-agenda, I mean, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Those appointments are approved. Without unfinished business, that moves us into reports of committee for final...
I had a question on 1313.
1313, okay.
Okay, yeah, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, you know, we'll bring that up in the Wednesday meeting for discussion, but this is as it relates to some payments that were made through the municipal pension fund and a piece of legislation necessary to clarify those payments.
Okay, so we'll talk about that.
Yep. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This Wednesday's meeting?
No, 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 Councilwoman. As is our tradition, it'll be a week from Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay. That takes us to reports of committee for final action. Our first committee is our Committee on Public Works. Our chairs, Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith. Councilwoman wishes to be on the phone to register her final votes. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I should have told you that. If you'll just bear with me one second. Okay. All right, our first committee then of the morning is our Committee on Public Works Services. Our chairs, Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, and may I have Councilwoman Straussberger for Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1300. Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 16, 2019 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1274. Resolution directing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to seek City Council approval for any and all transit options through Junction Hollow and Shinley Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill under our Public Work Services Committee... You've heard the reading and the title of the bill under our Public Work Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye. When their names are called, those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, six, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill's having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Deborah Gross. May I have Councilwoman, uh, Harris for Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill number thirteen oh one. Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January sixteenth, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twelve seventy-five. Resolution granting unto Andy Hardy their successors and assigns the privileged license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail, with handrail and landing at twenty-eight thirty-two Murray Avenue in the fourteenth ward, Council District Five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Is there further discussion on the bill? Okay, then seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye. When their names are called, those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Aye, six, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having received then, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number thirteen oh two. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January sixteenth, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven sixty-four. Resolution requesting the approval of an inter-municipal transfer of liquor license from a Previs Inc. to the applicant Wing Harts Burger Market Inc. for the premises located at Five Market Square, known as Wing Harts Burgers, pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? And seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
No.
Mrs. Harris.
No.
Mr. O'Connor.
No.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
No.
Ms. Strausberger.
No.
Mr. Kraus, President.
No.
Six nos, bills fail.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having failed to receive, the legally required number of votes is not passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. The Chair has some very brief meeting announcements. Council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, January twenty-third at ten a.m. for a standing committee meeting and on Thursday, January twenty-fourth, six p.m. Council will be hosting a cablecast public hearing on Bills, uh, twelve eighteen, twelve nineteen, twelve twenty and twelve twenty-four as they relate to firearms control. So I'd like to take this opportunity to speak to members about discussions that are taking place around the public hearing on the gun bills. Uh, as the Chair of the Hearings Committee, I have been in communication with Councilman O'Connor, Councilwoman Strausberger, Public Safety, Law, EMS, Fire, uh, and anyone else that might have an interest in making certain that the meeting goes as planned, that the meeting is, uh, protects First Amendment right of everyone to come and register their thoughts before the council. Uh, that people that wish to come, um, in support of the legislation that's proposed can do so in an environment that is not intimidating or threatening in any way. That those that wish to come and speak against the ordinance have the right to come and speak before council to hear their voices, uh, have their voices heard. And that employees in the building, the council members and the clerk's office have the right to also, uh, be in that hearing, uh, and feel safe and secure um, and have, make certain that all precautions are taken. So I'm sure you have heard some things that have come up in discussion about how we may choose, uh, to conduct this public hearing. It is under the purview of the President, it is my committee, uh, and I am working diligently with those members that have put the legislation forward as well as our Public Safety Director, um, our Chief of Police, uh, our Fire Chief, EMS and our Law Department to make certain that, um, we indeed, uh, respect everyone's right to be here, uh, in a public setting and register comment. So, uh, regardless of what you may have heard or not heard, those discussions remain fluid. At this time, much of my last week or so has been in constant communication with all affected parties to make certain that, uh, we do conduct this hearing, uh, within all of the traditions uh, and the legal, uh, requirements of council and so it would be very early for anyone to make any kind of, um, conclusion based on speculation when this conversation still remains very fluid. Uh, with that, uh, I'll open it up to Councilman O'Connor.
Uh, yes, I just have to call for a Comcast post-agenda on HIV AIDS Commission with the new members as well.
Comcast, Mr. Burgess?
Mr. Burgess, what is...
It's an inside joke, Councilman.
Sorry, I was...
I was calling him Councilman Burgess this morning.
Impersonating you all day, yes.
So, yeah, you, you wish to host a cablecast...
Cablecast.
Post-agenda on, uh, the HIV Commission?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we have discussion on the Councilman's motion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, we will do that. Next, we have Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, I want to go back to the public hearing for Thursday. Uh, and there is much discussion throughout the building and in the community that this public hearing will be held downstairs in, uh, the main lobby. Is that true?
Councilwoman, as I stated earlier, under the purview of the President's office and my, uh, position as Chair of the Committee, the conversations remain fluid uh, and they will do so until there are definitive decisions that have been made.
Well, I really have some concerns if that is done because we've had a number of public hearings before where people not only sat on the floor, up and down the aisles, uh, round the room, including behind us, in front of the door, on the steps here, uh, and on the floor surrounding the back of us. I believe that we have to, under all circumstances, treat everyone the same. And, uh, I know the occupancy permit has been pulled out of the dust and has not been used, oh God, I can't tell you how many years. Um, we have always been safe up here with, uh, our police officers and if we needed more than one, uh, we had them. We have the exit door right here. If we need to leave for some circumstance to go to our office for a minute, um, and also to the restrooms. Anyone that comes up to this floor has always had the restrooms outside the two doors here and, uh, we set up chairs, uh, outside in the lobby with a television set so when their name was called, they could come in and speak from wherever they're at. Uh, if there was any leftover from there, we would have a television set down in the lobby for waiting to be at this public hearing. Uh, there is basically one door in and one door out of here and the officers can see exactly, you know, what is going on surrounding this room. Uh, we have always had the media, um, right behind the, uh, the, uh, rope here. And I have to say, um, that I never remember anyone sitting around us, behind us, all over the floor until your President, Mr. Kraus. So, uh, because it, people have been treated that way in the past, there should be no reason to treat anyone any different. And if we do decide to go on the first floor, uh, I don't believe that is fair. Uh, you gotta pull the cameraman down there, you'd have to do special lighting. Uh, all the officers would have to be, um, have people, uh, officers basically standing at all the officer doors. Um, and on the sides, uh, where the glass is, on the second, third, I think, fourth floor too. Um, everything that you say down there echoes. It's not like up here in this room. And, um, I think this council feels very safe and we have treated everyone the same. Gosh, as, as far back as I can go with four majors and I guess it was about thirteen councils. Um, the building, uh, the building, uh, we would have people coming. Still, I mean, um, I, for one, stay after six o'clock at night and I see others leaving the building too. So, uh, we would have, um, those issues down in the lobby. Also, it's below zero weather and coming in and coming out of those doors and having a number of people coming in is not gonna make it like it is up here. Uh, also, uh, restroom facilities down there are not quite as they are up here. Uh, besides that, if anyone carries any kind of weapons, uh, they are taken off of them and they are kept on that first floor. The security retrieves the firearms, uh, lawfully carrying in accordance with the law of section nine thirteen. And, um, it just doesn't make sense unless this is something that we're going to do when we have a number of people and hold to the numbers that were not put up for occupancy for any public hearing, uh, in the last forty-five years that I know of. Um, the other issue is if you ha- have any kind of factions, uh, uh, you can sort of separate and the officers are here for anyone that starts cackling and, uh, posing or pushing around or anything, uh, on this floor. And again, there's one way in and one way out for those people. Uh, we control the signs up here. This is our room and any demonstrations that go on can be done down in the lobby, not up here in council's cha- chambers. We have been secure for all these years, uh, with our police officers and if we needed more for this room, uh, we could have them, but downstairs, I mean, we're talking, uh, many, many police officers. Uh, also, again, the video and the audio for attendees is gonna have to have lights set up, uh, audio so that everyone in the downstairs first floor, uh, can hear and also, uh, that video can be seen, um, on television. The other, the other issue is the media. The only ones that have been allowed past this belt here up until four or five years ago, uh, have been the media and they have set their cameras up on both sides and, uh, have been sitting around back in this area. Uh, heavy turnout, we know, and this possibly could be a heavy turnout, is done in accordance of how we have done it forever. Any overflow out in the hallway with a television and then down on the first floor. And for that matter, safety, um, and being more safe in this bu- in, in this room here. Uh, there are many, many bathrooms and many, many offices, uh, from the first floor to the ninth floor. So you don't know what's gonna happen. And so, and, and as far as having any kind of, um, uh, weapons, um, right, we've all brought in knives to, in our offices to cut cake and so have others and many, many other, uh, uh, tools that we have here. Uh, matter of fact, we do have a civilian that carries two guns on himself, which, uh, shouldn't be right. And I'm not saying I want guns brought up here, but we are safer to be up in this room and so are the clerks and, uh, the media are all behind here. If you want to keep them behind, let them sit on the floor like you did with every other hearing. If not, and this is going to be started, then number one, we could be sued because we're doing it differently. And number two is that, uh, if we're going to do it this way, then we must do it this way for every other public hearing that we have when people, when a lot of people come to it. Um, it doesn't make any sense to try to treat anyone any different and I, for one, have never ever treated anyone different. I'm not saying that anybody on this council are the ones that have made these decisions, but I think it's a very poor decision downstairs. And besides that, with the number of people that could come to this public hearing, we could all be freezing down there till three, four o'clock in the morning. So, we're secure, everyone is secure. And, uh, to do it as we have been doing it, putting overflow in the hallway after we let them sit on the floor and everything else up here, I have no problem with. I just want to be fair to everyone.
Of course, thank you, Councilman.
There could be lawsuits and I don't want to be a part of any of it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So I would ask you if you would please go back and discuss this with those that have decided we're gonna treat people differently.
So as I stated in my previous comments, uh, we have been in communication with every affected party for the last week, maybe even ten days now and the conversation remains fluid and open and no final decisions have been made.
And there are other, uh, council members that do feel the same way because nobody wants to treat other people differently. When we do, that's when we get into trouble.
So with the...
And speaking of... And speaking of number two, speaking of treating people different-
Lee.
I asked to have a post agenda, and I was trying to set it up, Mr. O'Connor asked that I tried to have the post agenda before the public hearing. So when I looked at the dates, I first asked the Clerk's Office to hold Wednesday and Thursday afternoon since there was nothing on the calendars. Then I thought, well, we might have people to come, you know, to stay over for the post agenda, and this is basically for Council, and people can see it televised. I started to ask those guests for the post agenda, which was voted on by this Council, and as I said, Wednesday, or Thursday was very busy. I had everything set up, Mr. Kraus, for Wednesday afternoon at one o'clock. I was called back by one of our clerks. No, what do we call Kim? What is Kim? Okay, she's a clerk. So I said, one of our clerks. I got called to be told that the room was not available after I had it on hold, and when I questioned it not being available, I was told that Mr. Kraus decided to make it unavailable. I am sitting here today with both Wednesday and Thursday afternoons that this room was available, and I don't think we should treat one Councilmember different than the other. I called Cory O'Connor on the phone and, you know, explained to him, I'm sorry, but Bruce Kraus said the room wasn't available Wednesday or Thursday. And here I am with a whole afternoon open on Wednesday and Thursday from the Clerk's I would like to know why I could not have this on Wednesday?
Sure, be happy to share that.
Excuse, may I finish?
Be happy to share.
May I finish?
You asked me a question, Councilman, I'm happy to share.
I did not ask you, address you yet.
If you can provide me so much as a single-
I did not address you yet, Mr. Kraus.
Councilman, you're not going to talk over me, you're not going to talk over me.
I talk over you, you are being very, very rude.
May we call to approve the minutes, excuse our absent member during the meeting?
You are very rude.
May we have a second on that, please?
This is ridiculous.
May we have a second on that?
This is, I was going to have the post agenda on Wednesday.
Councilwoman-
He said it was not available.
Councilwoman, there is-
I would like the next three weeks-
There is absolutely no communication whatsoever from my office requesting those dates.
I would like from the clerks, the days-
Produce one character of communication to my office asking those dates.
That will be available for the next three weeks so that I may have the post agenda this, this Council had.
May I please have a second on the motion to excuse our absent member, approve our minutes and adjourn our meeting?
That I could have, this is wrong to do what he had done after I had all these people scheduled.
Councilwoman-
And they weren't people that were treated any differently.
Not at any moment in time did you communicate to me your desire to host those meetings.
I have never, ever been treated this way, and nobody ever tried to overpower a calendar, a calendar.
You can continue to try to speak over me.
No one, no one has ever tried to, to do this, and I think it's a shame, and I don't think you should do it again, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris.
And I would like the next three weeks, clerks, clerk, I, both, I would like the dates open for the next three weeks, morning and afternoon, and if you have to pass it on to him before, which is, is a damn shame-
Councilwoman, that's the tradition of how they are scheduled.
Then, then, we will have the dates, but to do this when I had people scheduled and that Councilman O'Connor asked me to have it ahead of time, I think is wrong.
Say no, Councilman.
So I have, yes.
So I, I hear you, Councilman Harris, I think you, you've made your point.
Thank you.
I think you've made your point. I would, Mr. President, like to ask the question, I was in a press conference with the mayor, I do not know the outcome of Bill oh seven six four.
Which is under which committee?
Which is the, which is under Cory O'Connor's-
Oh, it was voted-
It failed.
No, failed.
That's, okay, so all the other bills passed?
All, yes.
So I, that's why I asked, I wanted to join, I want to join my colleagues in rejecting Bill oh seven six four.
So noted.
But I also want to, I also want to vote aye on the bills, the remaining bills that passed.
So noted, Councilwoman.
All right, so with, with that, I will, I will move that we excuse the absent member, approve the meeting, and approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
We have that motion, I just need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.